Please stand up with a hello fresh, hello green, green fresh. I give you a quick, oh, wait, no.
Hi, Brian.
Hey, how you doing? I just saw your email.
Yeah, but Abby sent a new one, so I got in. For right now.
Yeah, I want to update you on our meeting and then tell you how the board meeting goes. Okay.
Donna, you're not muted. Oh, now you are. There we go. Abby, so far you have, are you ready for the quorum?
Almost. Give me just a second. A couple of technical difficulties.
Another one? Come on now.
Ah dude, it is gonna be that kind of night.
I thought we had our one glitch for the night.
No, apparently not just yet, but we're working on it. All right. I am ready for a roll call, Rowena.
Okay, right now we have Brian, Paul, Amber. Oh gosh, they're jumping on me. Sorry, hold on. Looks like Brian, Paul, Amber. Brian, do you see anybody I'm missing?
I'm looking right now.
Probably other people are still trying to get in.
Yeah, I'm getting a call from Kathy right now, so I'll be off for a second. Yeah, Row, I don't see anybody else yet. Besides Amber and Paul, Kathy's coming on here in a second. We'll give everybody a little extra time since the link didn't work.
Brian, Chris, Mr. Downing can't get in. If somebody wants to actually maybe reach out to him.
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
I just sent him a text message saying to check his email.
Thanks.
Yeah, so he'll be, he should be just a minute, but he'll be in.
Bring that up because I think it's important for us to stay focused on being a community of faith together.
He's not muted.
For the vaccine.
Ginny, Karen, and Claire are joining. Did you catch that, Abby?
Yep, I got that. Thank you.
Yep. And Chris Farmer is coming in too.
Okay, Brian, at this point, we do have quorum.
Okay, thanks, Abby. I'm gonna give it another few minutes. I want to just give people time to figure out the new link.
And there are two people right now in the Zoom room that are not identified. So if those two people were willing to let me know who they were, I would rename them. I have one that just says iPhone and one that says sub. Oh, there we go. Got one of them.
Abby, could you please send the link out again to Chris? He's saying he hasn't got the email yet.
Yep, sending it right now.
Thank you.
Hey, that email was just sent.
Hey.
And I feel like the person that's joining right now, I believe, is one of the board members, but I can't remember who. It's Vincent's iPad.
That's Kathy.
There we go. And here comes Chris. Oh, he's coming in twice.
Thank you.
We're trying to lose you, Chris, but you found us.
Yeah. Tracked you down.
I'm gonna give it another two minutes just to give everybody a chance to figure out this new link.
Abby, did you get Jess Botcher?
Yes, I got Jess. I haven't seen Mary or Deb at this point.
Do those updated get posted on social media?
Yeah, I've got it updated on Facebook.
I'm almost tense. I'll be switching devices, just so you know, Rowena.
Okay, thank you.
It's muted. Hi, Brian, this is Kathy.
Yeah.
Mary's having trouble getting in. She wants to know if you could call her to patch her in.
All right, I sent her, are you on the phone with her right now?
Yes, yes.
I sent.
We'll hang up so you can.
I sent the new link to her in an email to her, her personal address, if you can tell her that.
Mary, there's a new link. I had trouble getting into. There's a new link. Go to your email. And it's, it's, did you send it to her home email?
Yes.
You did. Okay, she's got it. You should be there soon then. Okay, okay, Mary. Okay, bye bye. Okay, she's doing what she's gotta do.
All right, thanks, Kathy. We'll kick it off at 6:10, just to let everyone know.
I'm gonna mute myself, so I don't, let me know when you want me to talk. Can you hear me?
Gotcha, Mary.
Thank you so much, Brian. I'm sorry I'm always the last.
No, we had a Zoom glitch tonight, so we're giving another couple minutes.
Illiterate to join you. But I'm here now.
That's all that matters.
I can't be a dog.
So, Row, I'm just showing Jess Botcher and Deb Ladd are the only two missing. Is that correct?
No, Jess is here, sorry.
Oh, she is here, okay.
Yep, Deb's the only one I haven't seen.
Okay. All right, we will kick this off. We'll call it to order at 6:10. No pledge tonight. Sorry about the Zoom glitch, everyone. I'm glad everyone made it, and hopefully there'll be a few more joining us as we start here. Adjustments to the agenda, Chris?
I have two. One is consideration. This is all under action items. Consideration for a literacy specialist K through five for the remainder of the school year. And the second would be consideration of the use of $20,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund to purchase air purifiers for all rooms.
Okay. And can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, December 10th, 2020?
So moved.
Chris, second? Anyone?
I'll second, I'll second.
All right, I heard Kathy. Any discussion, any discussions?
I just wanted to comment that I thought they were well done, and I like the fact we're getting in people's comments in the, it's so that there's a good record going.
Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna do this a little differently, just to try to save a little time here. I want to hear from anyone who is opposed to the approval of the minutes for December 10th, 2020. I hear no one, anybody abstaining? Okay, everybody else here, I have Kathy, myself, Jess, Chris, Ginny, Karen, Amber, Paul, Claire, and Mary approve the minutes of December 10th, 2020. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay, public comments, anybody? I don't see anybody waiting. Does anybody have anything?
Brian, Chris is raising his hand.
Go ahead, Chris.
Brian, I just want to mention for procedures, so that you can actually do, under parliamentary procedure, you can do what's called chair cast one. And then if nobody opposes, then you can do the vote, and that certifies a similar way and saves you time.
Okay, so how is it done again?
You say chair cat, you propose chair cat, one of, any of you of us can say chair cast one. And then if somebody opposes, they say they oppose, otherwise the chair can cast the one vote, and that counts as a vote, that counts as a vote.
All right, thanks.
I did have, I had one on the agenda that didn't get there. It said adopt and repeal. Are we just doing first readings? Are we doing full adoption of policies tonight? I wasn't clear from the, from the agenda.
Those are for full adoption of policies. If it's something that we can't, for some reason, do, we need to have further discussion on, we can table it and bring it up at the next one if it needs to be changed.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Anybody, public comments? I don't see any, anybody waiting to speak. Okay.
Brian, can I just, I just got a text from Deb Ladd.
Yeah.
And she said, I've tried for my laptop and phone and cannot log in. I am sorry. If someone wants to send me a new link, I will try again.
Okay, thanks.
Brian, I'll take care of that on my end.
Thank you very much, Abby. Okay, we'll go into the comments, the chair comments. I want to take a minute, real quick, just to share my thoughts on the events that happened at the Capitol last week and how I think it relates to us here. So just hear me out. It was reinforced to me personally just how fragile our democracy can be and the collective effort it takes to hold it together. And my thoughts went from that to the role of public education in a healthy democracy. In mandating public education, main constitution essentially says that it's essential to the preservation of the rights and liberties of the people. I think that especially this year with COVID, it's easy, in the everyday tasks of teaching and running a school, to lose sight of the fact that there's a much greater purpose at play here. This democracy doesn't work unless we have an educated population of voters. So I want to recognize everyone here who's dedicated themselves to education. That means the superintendent, administrators, teachers, support staff, and also everyone who just, you know, is integral in the operation every day of a school. Office staff, custodians, bus drivers. I think your jobs are vital to the success of this country, and if there's any silver lining that I can pull out of last week, I have a renewed recognition for just how important quality education has always been to the country. So I just want to say thank you to everyone I just mentioned for everything you do. That's the only comments I have today. Chris?
Thank you, Brian, for that. I'm speaking on behalf of the RSU 78 educational family, and we will turn that right around and say thank you for the support from not only yourself, but from the, from the board members. We know why we're here, you know why we're here, and the kids are our ultimate goal, and thank you for that support. I just have, I just have a couple of points I'd like to bring up, so I can update the board as well as everybody that's listening in. You probably know that on December 27th, a new stimulus bill was signed into law. It was known as the CR R S A. Don't ask them what those letters stand for, but it's like the relief that was signed back in March. There is an educational component to it. The availability of that will be known as the E S S E R number two. With that, the couple nice points, one is that it will be, this funding can be extended through the year 2023. So we're not up against that December 31st deadline of the other one, which only gave us really six months to do things. The second point is that the Department of Education within the state of Maine is telling the superintendents that this funding will be about four times more than it was in March and April, which is going to allow us to do some really nice things. And one of the points that we're looking at is that this additional funding will be used directly to make sure that our staff and our students are able to take care of their needs. Number one need that we're looking at is make sure our kids are ready to move on to their next level, whether it be an elementary student moving into the next elementary class, middle school student preparing for high school, or a high school student having to do credit recovery. We don't want to leave and not to steal a statement from the past. We do not want to leave any student behind. It's our job and our obligation and our duty to take care of our kids. That information, as far as the amount of funding, will be coming out from the Department of Education towards the end of January. So we'll let you know more once we have some concrete figures. The second is related to the CRF2 funding, which was scheduled to end on December 30th, 2020. With that new stimulus bill that's law, they've extended that to 6/30/21, which will allow us, we had them done anyways, but will allow us to make sure any projects that are under that are taken care of. So that's, that's good news. Vaccinations are starting to come up with regards to educators with school personnel. We will, the recommendation of the Department of Ed is to look at school nurses, health aides, and those involved with the healthcare of our students. And then the department will look at the CDC and the Department of Health and Human Services for school personnel. No confirmed date has been put out there. They are looking at what's called the 1B phase, which would then, if that all goes as planned, would be looking at March as a time in which school personnel will have the opportunity to receive vaccinations. The county designation, which is your red, yellow, and green, which comes out every other Friday, will be coming out tomorrow. We, as superintendents, are asking the department who receives their instructions from the CDC and the Department of Health and Human Services, if the numbers continue to go up the way they are within the state, if they could go back to a weekly, so that we would have a better idea, that will be considered. But one of the things that was said by the commissioner today is that the percentage rate of education is much, much lower than the community, which shows that educational schools are really sticking to what we were asked to do. But we'll see what happens. But again, that'll be coming out tomorrow at noon time to see the designation. And the last point that I have for you all is that at the end of January, what's known as the ED 279, which is the educational funding information subsidy that comes from the state to the districts, is still on, is still on track, so that we can plan our budget accordingly through the month of February and of March. And with that also is that the governor's proposed budget is not going to decrease the educational GPA, but what districts are going to have to look at is our enrollment figures. So we're still, as superintendents, looking to see what the average would be there, whether they're gonna use 2019 and 2020, which we will show a good average, how that's gonna be for the state. RSU 78 actually had numbers that went up, so I'll let you know more about that when that comes out the end of January. And again, thank you for your support, and Happy New Year to everybody. I'll answer any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Okay, Georgia?
I don't, I don't have a lot to, to report out on. We're just working really hard right now, and teachers are continuing to work hard to support kids, and we, you know, we're starting to prepare for our budget. And, you know, we expect that the budget process is gonna be a tough one this year. But we're gonna start the process and, and that's really, that's really, that's really gonna be, you know, administration's focus for a while. That's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Georgia. I am looking here, Maya or Autumn, are they on here? I don't see them. Okay, so no student rep tonight. The committee reports. Kathy, policy committee?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, we had a meeting on January 6th that was very productive. We'll be voting on a lot of things later on, action items later on in the meeting. And our February meeting is going to be February 3rd, Wednesday, February 3rd at 1, at 2, 2 o'clock, I hope. All goes well. That's it.
Okay, Kathy, yep. Finance met tonight, just before this meeting, looked over the latest monthly financial statement. Everything looks good right there. We are keeping an eye on the regular instruction portion of that, just because of the two positions that we were funding with the CRF funds that are now coming out of our regular budget. But these new CR, or not CRF, but the new COVID funds anyway, will help us out along those lines as the rest of the year goes on when they come in. We're gonna talk later on, one of the adjustments to the agenda is about adding a literacy specialist K to five, so I'll save that discussion for, for that agenda item. We set budget season start in the first draft of the budget for the next school year we're gonna get at the meeting in February. And then from there, the finance committee is gonna meet weekly to try to hash that out. Like, it's been talked about, superintendent in Georgia, this has potential to be a difficult, challenging budget season, just trying to come up with a plan for what's, what is the school year gonna look like next year? So we'll be meeting weekly to take care of that. We also talked about the, the finance committee approved sending to the full board the purchase of air purifiers out of the Capital Reserve Fund. That's also another action item that we will talk about, and that is it for the finance committee. Facilities, Jenny?
Yep, well, you've gone over some of it, that looking at the air purifier, air purification system, and I think we'll have you and us will have some kind of a plan report out. We reviewed the budgeting for this year, and we seem to be on target with the facilities budget. And then we also talked about next year's budging, budgets, which you've already said are coming out before our February meeting, and we also looked into And we also looked into a second egress and we've asked for a report, uh, in terms of the, um, school path as a second egress and also the purchase of a piece of land, which would give us a second egress directly attached to the school. And come spring, we're going to look at our five-year plan again and, um, definitely consider some kind of a capital reserve fund for the facilities.
Jenny, I have a quick question. That second egress piece of land, is that the piece of land that we've talked about historically that's, uh, kind of across the parking lot from the school building? And they have offered that land to us in the past. Has that price tag ever changed?
Not significantly, um, but it, you know, there are some changes and adjustments.
Okay, so you'll be looking at that more deeply and then presenting that as a proposal to the board?
There probably will be some kind of a proposal.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Anything else, Jenny?
No.
Okay, um, Seth, team leader report.
Yeah, um, so the big thing right now, uh, we're looking to get into we as in, starting next week. It may be delayed some because with the quarter wrapping up and going remote, we kind of extended, the quarter still closes tomorrow. We extended some time for kids to finish things up that really need to be done in person. But we're still trying to get that done so I can prepare for the February meeting to give a report out, um, on how we're doing, kind of looking forward to seeing where our students line up there. Like I said, the quarter is wrapping up. It ends tomorrow. Report cards will be going out. I'm going to email this out to parents tomorrow. Report cards will not go, will not go out next week. It'll be the week after. Like I said, we want to give kids, especially at the six through 12 level, time to get any assessments and stuff they need to be done in person done. At the team level in our meetings, you know, right now, as we've talked about with the, adding the position we're going to talk about is, uh, students are concerned. So at the team level where we're meeting, a lot of our focus is on the students that need the most help and how we can, um, best, best help them catch up or, you know, with credit recovery. And the ski program with saddleback, I talked about that last time. We're still trying to figure out how to do something for the kids, but every time we think we have a plan in place, we think about the COVID restrictions and it brings up all these other questions. So I still don't have an answer for what that's going to look like or if it's going to happen at this point. But we are still working on partnering with the mountain to get the kids up there one day a week to ski. But I'm not sure what that's going to look like yet. And, um, yeah, I guess that's all, all I have.
Chris, do you have a question?
Yeah, quick question. Seth, going into, uh, we're going to be going back to normal operation next week tentatively, or is that, that's the plan? It's back to the five, the five, four?
I think that's, uh, 10, I think, on the agenda, new business.
Okay, but if, if we were back at our normal operation, do you have a list? Do we know the numbers of who's still full-time remote regardless and that there? I know we usually get an update on that. I was just wondering if, if that's changed.
Yeah, I.
Quarter people get to choose, and I just didn't know how third quarter, if you've gotten intentions from people yet, if they're coming back in or not.
I'm not sure of those numbers that, you know, the list kind of grew quite rapidly right before Christmas. And we're still at about 30 right now, I believe, with a lot planning to come back. So hopefully that happens. But I'm not sure we, of the commitment for third quarter yet.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, appointments, resignations, nominations. Chris?
Get my mic on. Uh, we have two points here. One is that Martha Thompson has resigned and, uh, retiring into, and not, she did not come back after the Christmas break. And that we've appointed, um, Sean Russell into the technology technician position. Uh, Sean, I know we were trying to get some information. I know you probably, you folks know Sean better than I do. Uh, Sean is joining us from U M F where he was involved with the admissions program. Uh, he also was involved in a computer technology, uh, master's program down there. Uh, Sean is returning to RSU 78. Um, I know he was up here before. And we're quite excited to have Sean back on board and, uh, he's working along with our school and that he's just fit right back in. So that's my appointment and resignations.
Does anybody have any, uh, comments? Karen?
Thanks for the introduction, Chris. I appreciate it.
I just want to thank Marty Thompson for her, um, efforts that she's put into the school. She's a very valuable member and she will be Miss Soil.
Do well.
All right, so, uh, go to item nine, update on winter sports.
Okay. Do we have to make a, do we have to vote on Sean or is that just a, a given?
That is, it's not a teaching position, so it doesn't require the nomination approval. It's a, um, it's in the, uh, support staff, which, uh, we appointed him, so you don't need a nomination and, and that to approve.
Just a quick question that, thank you, Chris. I appreciate that.
Yep.
Okay, the winter sports update.
That's, that's me too. Um, to let you know that, uh, as you remember in December, we, uh, we've sort of brought the board up to date on the MPA guidelines and the committees, such as the Maine Principal Association and, uh, D H H S, Department of Health and Human Services, the CDC. Uh, we have been following those. Um, this past week, uh, we've had no practices due to, uh, being fully remote. Uh, and looking at the guidelines that the Maine Principal Association put out, um, we will be back, uh, practicing next week. I do want to let you know that as far as the girls' basketball program, uh, they will be going into what's considered a phase three, where intra-squad scrimmages are allowed. Uh, we are not going to push, uh, as far as scheduling until we get a better idea, of what's happening with the schools and with the regional area that, that we would play in. The boys' program unfortunately, due to, uh, numbers, both, uh, due to some academic as well as injury, is at a point now where, uh, they can no longer look at participating in games. They're down to four. The ski program has been, uh, moving along up until obviously last week, or this week that we're in. Looking forward to getting that back underway over the saddleback. And the other part on the update on the winter sports is that our middle school, uh, will be having basketball sign up. I believe, uh, it's going to start like tomorrow or beginning of next week. And then we will look to follow the same guidelines that we followed for the MPA. Um, I do want to just mention, uh, one of the concerns that we have discussed at the administrative level is our concern with sort of going outside our own bubble of people that are participating with their mask on and that. Uh, some schools have started around the state. And unfortunately, there was one game earlier this week where a visiting team, the next day had a, uh, player that tested positive, so therefore both of those teams are now in quarantine. So that's the reason why we're looking the way we are. We're, we're, we're moving along cautiously. But at the same time, uh, we want to make sure that every opportunity is provided, if it's safe, to put our kids in, uh, competitive, uh, arenas. And again, I'll answer any questions if there are any.
Anything after questions, comments? Okay. And, uh, on item 10, the, uh, third quarter schedule.
Yes, um, as what we've done since the beginning of this school year is that each quarter, right before each quarter starts, uh, we come back to the board with our recommendation. Uh, recommendation is based on how the previous quarters, as well as the quarter that we're in is going. So right now we'll be, believe it or not, entering the third quarter, which means we're halfway through our school year. And it'll be a school year we'll always remember. But that our recommendation is to continue as we're doing, which is a four or five schedule, which means we're in person on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday is a remote day, uh, which allows remote students as well as in-person students, uh, and teachers to prepare for that remote aspect. And those in person, uh, may get some extra help if, if needed. And then Thursday and Friday, we're back in person. And, um, I would just like to say that because of the hard work of the teachers, the administration, support staff, and parents, and also the kids, Rangers having a successful period in which we've been staying in person at four out of five days, which, which is pretty darn good. So that's our recommendation. Uh, we hope to continue it if, if the board supports us.
Absolutely.
So to follow our precedent that we've, uh, been doing as a board so far, um, we will vote to, uh, approve continuing with the current, uh, schedule, which is, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday in person, Wednesday, remote. And we can also obviously, uh, discuss and debate that. So first, do we have a motion to continue with the current, uh, learning model?
I so move.
That's Mary.
Second.
Karen, any discussion?
Chair cast one.
Let's do it. Chair cast one. We'll see how this works. If I don't hear anything, that's a unanimous motion passes, correct?
Well, yeah, you, you have no, you ask if there's any opposition. If there is none, you just declare it.
All right, any opposition? Okay, motion passes. We'll continue with the, uh, current learning model, which is Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday in person and Wednesday, remote.
Just a quick comment, Brian. I, I, I just would like to applaud Chris and Georgia and Seth and the, the decisions they're making. They've really kept us on track and done such an excellent job that our kids have been in person more than not. And they've been sensitive to the community issues and the CDC recommendations. And I think they need to be applauded for the great job they've done around this issue. I would just like to say that.
Thanks, Mary. Agreed. Thank you, Mary. And I think we need to include, um, Heidi and Jeff and especially Lindsay, who really is wearing many hats and is keeping us up to date on the medical professional aspect of it. But we appreciate, I'm, I'm going to say, we appreciate the support because it's so important to know that people understand that what we are doing is something that none of us were ever trained to do. And, um, it takes a team effort and that's what RSU 78 has. It's a team effort all the way through. So thank you.
It couldn't be a team effort, Chris, without the leadership that you guys provide and the collaborative working relationships that you've established within the school. And you should be commended for that.
Again, I thank you on behalf of, of the team.
To me, I just wanted to say that, uh, I agree with Mary's comments wholeheartedly. And I, I look at this as like, it, I'm sure you all wish you could go back to just having them make a call, whether or not it's a snow day. I remember that used to be such a tough thing to just have to figure that piece out. So this is like that on steroids and multiple challenges with that. So, uh, I applaud you for, for navigating it well. And I think from the comments I hear in the public that, you know, being proactive and, and doing those things has worked out, has worked out well. And the communication seems to be going pretty well with, with all of that there. So thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, Chris, for that. And again, I'll, now I'll add to it. The way our staff has, has pulled together, they've really, you know, it, it, it is, and I, I know I'm sounding corny, but it is truly a team effort. No individual can do this alone. And for that, I think, and include you as a school board for having the faith in us to make that decision. So thank you again.
All right, we'll move on to the, uh, action items. We'll start with the, uh, adjustments to the agenda. So the first one we'll tackle is the addition of a K to five literacy, literacy specialist to the, uh, staff. Georgia or Chris, whoever wants to, uh, take that to explain before we start, uh, voting and debate.
I, I'm happy to take that. Um, so, you know, before I, I stepped into this role, um, in the administration, I was, um, a teacher in, in the Title I department, which was, you know, our intervention department. And, um, since I've stepped away from that, um, you know, there's been, oh, I think there's been a little disconnect. Um, the, the ladies that, um, continue to work in that department are, have done a phenomenal job. And, um, I just couldn't, I can't say enough about, um, their level of professionalism and expertise and, and what they've done for kids. Um, as you, as you heard, um, Marty resigned. And so, and, and we have another staff member that's, it's out on, um, some medical leave for a little bit, who's been doing our GT program. And so we, you know, we, we need, right now, we're, we're down to one ed tech trying to do intervention right now for, um, a, a very large number of our elementary kids who are in need of some extra support, you know, based on, on, on where we've been. And, um, so I feel strongly that this, that this, you know, should be filled with a teaching position. I think it will, um, make all the difference for our kids and, um, you know, hoping for the board's support in this. Uh, we've got some work to do and, you know, I think a teacher can really make a difference with that. I think it could also help with, um, the, you know, our remote learners. As I said, with the kids who need intervention, with the GT part, um, while that other staff member's out. And you, I think it will just be a win-win for, for our school. It'll bring back something that, you know, um, now that I look back on things, you know, you know, without having that, you know, that teacher involved in that program, um, it, 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 you know, it could be, you know, it needs, it needs to have a teacher there.
Georgia, literacy is a cornerstone for all the rest of the learning and we know that. Could you share a little bit about this person that you're recommending?
Well, the, we're, it's going to, it will be a new position. We're kind of bringing back the position that, that, you know, I was in. Um, and so this position, um, is really going to require somebody who has, um, you know, a great deal of literacy experience, um, and who ha- has had some experience with the intervention piece, you know, a, a lot of, uh, skills and foundational piece work goes into this kind of, um, this kind of work, it, you know, right down from, you know, uh, the phonemic awareness to concept of word to, it, it's, it's a really important job. And a person would be working with teachers and making sure that our kids and, and Seth as the RTI coordinator, um, and, and really making sure that the kids get the best intervention possible.
So what you're asking.
Hey, Mary, give me, give me one second. Let's, so we can have, continue to have this debate. Let's get a motion, um, to approve the addition of a K to five literacy specialist. Anybody?
I move. We accept this position.
That's Jenny, a second?
I'll second.
I think that was Kathy is what I heard. Uh, okay. So Mary, go, go ahead.
My, my only question, Brian, and I apologize, was so we're approving the position. We're not approving a person yet. You, you just are going to be seeking a person to fill that position. Is that correct, Georgia?
That's correct. Yeah, it, it'll be opened up for hire. Yep.
True, I'm, I'm supportive a thousand percent. So terrific.
So I'm showing a, a public comment here. We'll handle those and then we'll go to the board. John Lemay? John, you there?
Will, will the extra helper be available, uh, on remote days?
Yes. Yep, if, yes, absolutely. Um, that will be, you know, that will, she'll, she can certainly coordinate with, um, with the teachers and, you know, the teachers, I believe, you know, wanna continue to do some, you know, to offer some remote time. But what this, this teacher could do would be to get, to give this, these students some extra time on top of what they're already getting. So yes, to that.
Okay, any uh, board input? I have uh, it's like Chris?
Yes. Hi. Um, quick question that I had was uh, what's, I think it's, I, I agree it's important literacy. I agree with everything that's been said on that. Do we have an estimate of the fiscal note on this, what the, the cost will be? We had an estimate. Obviously, it needs to be somebody who has, such as like when you did George, somebody has year, a few years' experience, that type of thing. So we, what are we going to be looking at? You know, is it somebody with eight to 10 years' experience? Is it, do you have a job description put together yet that, that, for that? I didn't see that in the packet. So I just didn't know if we're um, you had in mind of what you thought this was going to be for a cost.
Well, you know, obviously it's a teaching position. So we'd be looking at the number of years, you know, um, that a teacher has, has been teaching. I mean, that will play into it. Um, you know, ex- expertise and experience, college background will also be important for this position. I, you know, there is some federal money that is left because uh, we've had, you know, we budgeted for um, some positions that are no, you know, for people that are no longer with us. So we do have some money available for that, which will offset some of the cost. But you know, that's a hard question to answer. Um, it really is gonna be dependent upon the teacher's experience.
Hey. Chris, this came up in the, in the finance uh, meeting when we approved this. And it is, it's hard to get an exact number, but with the ed tech positions that are no longer being filled, a, a guesstimate would be like an extra 15,000 to come out of the budget above what we would save from the ed tech positions that aren't filled. And Chris Downing, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but with the money that's coming in, the new uh, COVID money that could go towards this as well. Please somebody correct. Okay.
Yeah, that is correct.
Well, the, is it, you talking COVID money would help for the first, the remainder of this fiscal year, but that won't be an onset. That'll be, this'll be an inherent.
School committee meeting.
That's correct, Chris, but the uh, the positions that we added this year, the extra um, K one and four or five teachers, those will be going away. So uh, there is some offset in the, in the budget for next year, even if we keep this position, which is the plan.
I was just curious from the job description, we had a rough budget about. So that's fine. So you're saying probably net positive 15,000 to the budget, not including benefits, I assume, so.
Correct, cuz we don't know if the person will need benefits.
Right. And then that'll be treated like a regular full teaching staff position, correct? That's what you're looking at, not from a contract.
Correct. That would come before the board for approval. That's the nomination approval procedure.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to comment on the fact that I think, as Mary said, that reading is so important. But we're coming out of eventually the COVID situation. And I think there are things we can learn from that with how kids are learning to read, so that we can utilize some of the good things that have come out of the COVID experience. But also I think it would be exciting um, to see somebody like this who could look at the programs we've had in reading before. The differentiated program in K two, I think was going into even three and four, that there is um, the potential here for some real gains and real excitement for kids learning and for teachers. So I'm strongly a supportive of this.
Absolutely. Great comments, Jenny. I agree with you wholeheartedly.
Anyone else? All right. Should we try this out again? Is it, what is it, Chris? Chair cast one?
Yeah, one of us says chair cast one.
Anybody opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously, the addition of a K five literacy specialist.
Thank you very much.
And the next one is uh, the use of $20,000 from capital reserve to buy airport purifiers for all uh, rooms in the building. Um, I can explain a little bit of that uh, before we make a motion. The uh, there was talk with uh, facilities about an ionization unit for the uh, school. There was some research done on that that shows that it has not been scientifically proven to be effective against what we're talking about with uh, COVID. So the alternative is something that is proven to be effective. Uh, the HVAC system we have with the HEPA filters already in the school, everything is great there. Um, we can make it even uh, stronger, safer by the addition of these air purifiers, portable air purifiers into each room in the school, uh, which also use the same HEPA filters. So you get uh, much more um, air changes per hour essentially with clean air that would be happening uh, throughout the school. The cost of this is uh, in the vicinity of $600 a unit. The estimate for putting them in every room in the school is where we got the $20,000 uh, number. So that is, that's where this came from. The finance committee um, approved it. And before we go further, let, why don't we get a motion to approve the use of $20,000 from the capital reserve fund for the purchase of air purifiers?
I move that.
Chris, second?
Second.
I saw Jenny. Okay. And then um, discussion?
I just wanted to say that I, I've seen these in action several places. And, and, and based on the research that someone that, that was done, I hundred percent agree that this is a, it's a good way. It, it gets something in every classroom. I, I would like to say that, you know, this, this to me, I think is something that's important to get done as soon as possible. That's why I'm glad we're voting on it tonight and hopefully it can be implemented right away.
Anyone else?
Chair cast one.
Anyone opposed? Okay, I hear nothing. Motion passes unanimously, the approval of uh, 20,000 from capital reserve for the purchase of air purifiers for all rooms. Thanks.
Terrific.
All right. And on to the uh, rest of the action items that are there. Um, these are all policies. We're a little behind on uh, policy related stuff, just because the uh, meetings haven't happened for a little while. Uh, I will let Kathy explain these each in a small bit of detail before we have a motion to adopt them and then debate it further. So Kathy, uh, the first one there, policy AC.
Policy AC is one of the Title IX policies that the state gave us back last summer. Uh, they're required policies, but they have been greatly expanded. So this, the only reason this was a little behind, we needed to include a job description for a Title IX coordinator. So we finally got that in place and now we need to adopt the policy.
All right. So there's all these policies. I should have said this, uh, Wendy sent them out. I think it was earlier this week and hopefully everybody's had a, a chance to look at them. So let's, uh, before we talk about this, have a motion to approve uh, policy AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity and affirmative action.
I'll move if I can.
Sure. Kathy, second?
Me.
I'll second then. Yeah.
Okay, I didn't catch.
Mary, Mary move. I sec.
All right, Mary moves and Kathy seconds. Discussion?
I'm wondering, Kathy, if you could just highlight um, the changes in each of these, that we could just vote for them in a block? Would that be possible or should we take the one?
I think we, I can, I can cup, I can double up some of them, but I think these first three adoptions are very different. Um, the first one, like I said, it, it included um, the uh, job description, which is several pages long um, that, that Georgia put together for us. And it is, um, it's required. We're a little behind on accept, on adopting this policy.
Okay.
So that's one. If you wanna, uh, the three, the, the three that we have to adopt, the second one is admission of resident students. And that um, has to do with um, when we were being, I guess, asked uh, by certain.
I agree with you, Kathy. I think these are different enough that we, let's just tackle them individually.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay.
So on the first one again, AC.
Yes. What do you wanna know? It's, I, I've described it twice.
No, no, you're, you're, you're good Kathy. I'm just, is there any other uh, input or discussion about this? No one? All right. Somebody say the words.
Chair.
Chair, chair class one.
Any, anyone opposed?
Aren't you supposed to say that?
Somebody else has to say it apparently.
Okay.
Anyone opposed?
Oh.
Chair cast one vote?
All right, anyone opposed? Motion passes. Uh, adopt policy AC. Onto uh, policy JFAA. Go ahead, Kathy.
JFAA is a policy that um, we needed to have um, to help us decide uh, who is a resident and can legally be, I guess, be admitted to our school. Um, we didn't have this policy. We had admission of non-resident student policy. But this one point, um, it's, it's more to the point of to who is legally allowed in the schools. It's a pretty self-descriptive um, telling, um, describing what the residence, uh, what the resident is, guardianship is. Resident students, new resident students. It's brief and to the point. And we didn't have this policy and we, we seem to think we need it, especially in this COVID times.
So there were questions. There were questions prior to this school year about what determines residency for a student coming to school. MSMA recommended this policy to uh, to address that. So can I get a motion to approve policy JFAA?
So moved.
I got a whole bunch of people coming in. I think Karen was one of them. Did you move Karen?
Yes.
And then I heard Chris will use that as a second. Any discussion on this? All right, let's hear it.
Okay. Chair cast one.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Policy JFAA is adopted. And Kathy, policy BCA.
Uh, policy BCA is the board member code of ethics. At our uh, meeting with the um, state that we had the um, what do you call it?
Workshop.
The.
MSBA.
The workshop, right. Sorry. Thanks. Thanks, Mary. Um, they recommended that we have it and we all seem to agree it wouldn't be a bad idea to put this um, in our policies. And it's just a very straightforward uh, co- code of ethics that um, would require a signature from a board member as they come on, come on board. Um, hope, hopefully everybody read it and um, we will adopt it.
So this policy came straight from the MSBA and uh, one of the things, actually, you know what? Let's get a motion and I'll, I'll talk a little more. Motion to approve policy or adopt policy BCA.
I do.
That's Jenny and second?
Okay.
Second.
Kathy.
Thanks. Um, this policy, in addition to um, being recommended during our board training, uh, I agree that it's a good idea. And the other aspect of this, I think it can be useful for some, another recommendation from our board training, which is to do a board self-assessment over the summer. If we adopt this policy and then we also incorporate um, the board member responsibilities, the policy that already exists, I think that's a good starting point um, for us to do a self-assessment. So I think it'll be useful for that reason as well, to try to make ourselves a, of just a, the best functioning board we can be. Any other um, discussion or comments on this?
I had one question. It's, so this is verbatim from there, no edits by the policy committee. It just came directly from what they provided.
It did.
Good.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of important from liability standpoint, not just to use something that's been standardized.
Yeah.
That's correct, Kathy. Right. It just came straight from them.
Straight from there, no, no edits.
Anyone else? All right, I heard it.
Chair cast one.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes with dot policy BCA. Um, and now Kathy, it's up to you how you wanna handle these. We have revisions and rescinding of policies.
Right. Well, I think um, policy JLDBG and JLBDGR should go together. Because what they are, it's, it's the reintegration of students from juvenile correction facilities. And um, in the, the state has this, the second, the JLBDR included in JLBG, JLDBG. Because it's not really a procedure. It's, uh, it just touches on a different uh, type of juvenile. The first part is just in general, coming from a juvenile correction facility. The second part is specifically addresses a juvenile who has um, attacked or has had violence with another person. So what I did was I reintegrated them into one policy. And so they'll, essentially, it's just taking what's in JL, JLDBGR. This is a tongue twister. And um, including it in uh, JLDBG as one policy and then rescinding the other policy. Did you understand that?
Yes, ma'am. A motion to, um, we will, a motion to rescind policy JLDBGR and to revise policy JLDBG.
So moved.
Chris, second?
Second.
Uh, Karen, is that you?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Karen. All right. Um, any discussion? All right, let's hear the, the words again.
Chair cast one.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We will rescind policy JLDBGR and revise policy JLDBG. That's the reintegration of students from juvenile correction facilities. Okay, Kathy, JKG and JKGA.
The next, and um, JKGA dash R, I think can all be um, handled together. They are, um, these policies have been replaced by policies JK, JKAA and JKAA dash R, which we have in our, um, in our policy manual. Um, and they're, they, the state has just completely rescinded the other three because they're covered in the, the other um, policies, the JKAA and JKAA dash R. So essentially, we're just resc- rescinding things that are um, redundant. Those three are just redundant policies.
All right. So can I have a motion to rescind policies JKG, JKGA and JKGA dash R?
So moved.
That was Karen. And second from Chris. Any discussion? All right. Anyone wanna chair cast?
Chair cast one.
I'll chair cast.
I think I heard Karen first. Um, anyone opposed?
Okay.
I don't hear anyone oppose. So uh, motion passes. We will rescind policies JKG, JKGA and JKGA dash R. Kathy, thanks for all the work on uh, all this policy stuff. It can get mind-numbing and I appreciate it. And uh, Chris, thank you for the chair cast option that made things easier tonight. I think that is.
Brian, could I just make a quick? Brian, could I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
I also want to extend my appreciation to Kathy because I know she has spent enormous hours going through these policies at a almost mind blinding rate and putting them in order for us so that we're in a really good position. And I don't think any of us even begin to appreciate the amount of time and effort she has spent and the dedication she has committed to this. And I'm very appreciative. And I think the whole board is appreciative of the hard work she's done.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. So motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
I'm going to, how about a chair cast for this one?
Chaircast one.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. We will adjourn. Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Be safe.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.